It's Southampton Planning Board meeting for today's date, the seventeenth of April. Every member is present except for Paul Fergal, who may come shortly. But we do have a quorum, so we'll begin. And for everybody's information, this meeting is being televised on Charter Network over the Town Cable TV network. So the application this evening is for RGB Industries, thirty-nine College Highway Southampton Public Hearing, and it's for a definitive subdivision plan for twenty-eight Pequot Road. And it's being, RGB Industries is being represented this evening by R. Levesque and Associates of Westfield, Mass. So before we begin, the applicant has submitted a check for twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars for the fee for the subdivision plan. The abutters notices were submitted to me, and I personally took care of the mailing. The town departments were all notified, and to this date, at this time, I have not received any response from any of the town departments. However, I will note that the Highway Department Superintendent, I believe, someone said was on vacation this week. But more than likely, this meeting is going to be continued for some further information, and if he has any information to pass on to us, hopefully, he'll do so by then. Given that, I'm going to have Keith read the public hearing ad that was published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette for this particular meeting, and it was the same information that was mailed out to the abutters.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This was the notice of public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A. The Southampton Planning Board will hold a public hearing, April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven P. M. in the Town Hall, first-floor Meeting Room, to act on an application for a definitive subdivision special permit and stormwater permit under the Southampton zoning bylaws, Sections eleven and fourteen, governing the subdivision of land. The application is submitted by RGB Industries Incorporated, and the property is located at twenty-eight Pequot Road, map forty-one, parcel twenty-eight. The documents can be reviewed at the Town Hall Clerk's Office at two-ten College Highway, Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty A. M. to four P. M. All interested parties wishing to be heard on the matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. Signed, Paul Demon, Chairman. This was published April first, and April eighth, in the Hampshire Daily Gazette.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Rob Levesque from Levesque Associates in Westfield to present the plan on behalf of RGB Industries.
Thank you. Rob Leveque from our Leveque Associates here this evening representing Ryan Gielher. Ryan Gielher is with me in the audience. We have provided you with a nine-lot subdivision application and plan set for twenty-eight Pequot Road, map forty-one, parcel twenty-eight. As you are aware from the preliminary hearing, or preliminary meeting, we had submitted a plan very similar to what you see before you. There's a color plan to my left, and I'm happy to go through and look at the color plan on the screen. The subdivision plan set, I'm going to guess this is a ways down in the PDF. If it pleases the board, I can go to the...
Is this it?
Uh, no.
Keep going?
Yeah, if you would keep going. I can, I'll go to, I'll go over here for now, but if you get to something that looks like that...
Okay.
So this is Pequot Road here. We're proposing a pretty straightforward cul-de-sac after the word preliminary plan. We have nine lots, basically eight lots, and the remaining land. This is house number twenty-eight right here. We're proposing stormwater bases located on the south side of Lot Four. So we're anticipating that our roadway is certainly under the subdivision lengths. The grading and the soils and material on site are all reasonable. We've perked a number of lots, such as immigration. Perked lots. We are back in tonight, basically with essentially the same plan. We have tested several sections in this area. We've provided a stormwater report. As you can see, if you do that stormwater report, and they have time, so I'm not sure they have them this evening, but we're happy to answer any questions they have related to that. This is probably about as straightforward as they come. We have a perpendicular access off of Pequot Road, honey-sack distance on Pequot Road. I know that in past subdivisions that we've been before you before, there's been some concern about roadways entering, how we're entering, what roadway we're entering off of. In this particular case, Pequot Road is, you know, has a standard width. The pavement cross-section seems to be intact, and as far as, I did have a discussion with Mr. Gielher prior to the meeting, and he's happy to do the same thing that some of the past projects have had to do, where he would, I'm sorry, videotape the roadway, and take a look at what's out there, and then provide bond as necessary.
Could I ask the person from Charter, can, can his voice be heard from over there? Is it better to be at the podium?
Put that microphone toward him.
The end.
I picked it up. You can hear it.
So you could hear it, okay.
Yeah. So I'll just reiterate what I had said. So we were happy, as part of this project going forward, to make sure that Pequot Road stays intact. If there's any bond or any, you know, type of recon that we need to do ahead of time, and then, you know, ensuring that the roadway stays intact, we're happy to do that. Mr. Gielher certainly has heard that for past subdivisions, and we understand that you want to make sure your roads stay intact. But with that, it's a pretty straightforward nine-lot subdivision. I believe there are four waivers that were requested. I'll just get into those in a second. They're fairly basic, six waivers. Four on the first page. Thanks. First waiver is from Section four, point three, point two, point one. Southampton rules and regulations requiring a color scheme plan showing significant features. We do have a color plan this evening that kind of describes a more basic approach to the color scheme. However, it seemed logical that, you know, with the peer reviewer and, you know, with the experienced board, that, you know, the black and white made sense. A waiver also of four point three, point three, to allow us to vary from the scale of one inch equals forty feet. We're showing a one inch equals sixty feet for the ease of review. Number three was we're showing the waiver, what is it, subdivision is shown on one sheet instead of an index sheet, so it all fit onto one sheet. There was no requirement, no need for an index sheet. There's not multiple sheets that we need to reference. Number four, traffic analysis has not been provided at this time. If one's requested, we certainly would provide that. That's based on our understanding of the general traffic patterns in the area. The fact that this is a nine-lot subdivision, you could probably expect, and I'm sure Mr. Furman could speak to this, but I would expect that, you know, it'd be ten to eleven vehicle trips per day, per lot. And again, we don't anticipate change to the level of service at the surrounding intersections. We don't seem to have a site distance issue, but we'd be happy to address anything that does come up in the peer review. Number five, HGP E-pipe was, was shown. If the town requires RCP, that certainly could be accommodated, but it made sense to do the HGP E as its industry standard at this point, and fairly logical, and a little easier to install, and just as effective, at least in our opinion. And number six, no lighting is proposed. The subdivision is in harmony with the neighborhood. There is no lighting on Pequot Road. If that's an issue, we're certainly happy to discuss that as well. But they seem logical requests, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Did you also, Rob, I thought you had one about the sidewalks, which...
Oh, yes, I believe we are showing sidewalk on one side of the street.
Because you had another, you had another waiver dated December twentieth, twenty eighteen, asking for that. It wasn't in this packet, but you had a separate cover letter requesting it.
Right. Okay, thank you, Rob. So we are showing sidewalks on just one side, which is the north side of the street at this point. There's no reason why it should be on the other side of the street because everyone would maintain that, but right now, we're showing it on the north side of the street, and we're wrapping around to the end of this whole section.
And in lieu of that, you're paying, you're paying in lieu fee for not doing it on the other side, correct?
We would do whatever is appropriate within regulations.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it makes sense, because I don't think the...
Identify yourself.
... college, I don't think it's clear, I don't think it's clear in the...
In the subdivision bylaws on what the fee would be if you asked for the waiver, I didn't see it in there. So I'm willing to, if there is a fund for sidewalks in town, to, in lieu of putting two in, to both sides, and then fun, putting money into the fund.
Right. I've already checked with the town accountant, and she will create an escrow account for sidewalks, but it's, it's up to the board, I guess, if you think it's unclear. Keith's looking it up and out. It's unclear about that, but what the, what the equation will be for, you know, the amount to be paid in the fund for not installing them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm on board with it, as long as it makes sense for, for both parties, so...
Okay. Go ahead, Rob.
I believe that's, unless I'm missing any other waivers, I do believe that's all of the waivers, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Before we get to any questions, I would like to have our consultant this evening, John Furman from VHB Associates in Springfield, who is acting on behalf of this board on this project. For anybody's information, we have the capacity to ask for outside consultants to help us with this, especially subdivisions and zoning bylaw changes. And typically, we have PVPC help us with these type of issues, seeing as they were in a state of flux there a few months ago and didn't have staff because they had some retirements. When the preliminary subdivision came about, we contacted VHB to represent this board for this particular project, and seeing as VHB did the preliminary subdivision review, we have them continuing on to finish with this definitive. So at this time, I'll ask John Furman from VHB to make his comments regarding this plan. And at this time, probably just the definitive, and we'll just maybe discuss the stormwater a little bit down the road here.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm John Furman. I'm the Director of Land Development for the Springfield office of VHB. We have done reviews for the board before. This is our first review of a definitive subdivision plan under the new bylaws. So there's, the memo that we put together is about nine pages long, and for those of you that may not have ever seen any of the reviews that we do, we use all of the ordinances as a checklist, and we go down through and check every item. So even though the report is nine pages long, a lot of it is just confirmation of things that have been addressed. So in general, the, the plan set itself was well-prepared, and it's very evident in going through that, that the bylaw and the subdivision regulations were, were reviewed quite thoroughly as they were being preparing the plans. I think at the end of the, of our memo on the last page, just because of the, of the length of the, the report, we usually summarize all the comments in the back, and I think there was twenty-two comments, and none of them were really outstanding or anything that needed to be concerned about, it's just that we just have to address them. So, so unless there's any immediate questions, I'll get right into it. So what...
Do you have a copy? Is there actually a copy?
Of...
We didn't get the memo.
VHB College.
I, I can read it word for word if that...
It's dated April fifteenth?
Uh, April fifteenth, yes.
If you want to go ahead, I'll get some copies.
I'll take a copy.
Okay. You want me to keep going for?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the, the regulations that we looked at when we did our review were the Town of Southampton zoning bylaw, and there were two or three sections in there that applied. The Southampton subdivision regulations and the peer review that we did on the preliminary plan, which was dated January eighth of two thousand and nineteen. Rob had given a decent overview of the, of the property itself, just a couple of things that are in your various regulations. The property does not have any resource areas on it that would be under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, and there are no endangered species or habitat areas to worry about as well, so that kind of cleans things up. And lastly, I think you're all aware, because the subdivision is proposed as a nine-lot subdivision, it does not fall under the inclusionary zoning bylaw, which you have in town, which is, the trigger for that is ten. So, so it's really straightforward. Rob had commented on all the waivers. Typically, what we do in our reviews is that we comment on them as well and give you our opinion, so, and again, it's just our opinion. You can use that as you're making your decision. So the first one, I'll spare the numbers because they're on the memo when you actually get, get it, but on the color scheme, your, your bylaw actually asks for different features to be basically different colored line weights. I think there's six or seven of them. So when you look at the things you're looking to identify, and you compare that to what is on this plan, only two of them apply, and the two colors that you'd be looking at would be light gray and black. So to me, it's appropriate that that waiver be granted. This color plan here shows more of the site than that, that color plan actually will. The plan scale, basically, you require a forty scale. This is drawn on a sixty. If you did it at a forty scale, you'd have a match line, and then you'd have to do an index sheet so you could see what sheets you're looking at. So it's, in our opinion, the, the plan is very legible. All the information that's on it is still being able to be read, so we would support the waiver of that. The next one is the index sheet. So this one isn't as little, as, as clear-cut. So if you grant the waiver of the plan scale, then you don't need that waiver for the index sheet, or you would need the, the waiver for the index sheet, because if you grant the scale, then you don't need the index sheet. But if you don't grant the waiver on the plan scale, then you need to deny the index sheet waiver. So that one's a little tricky. You're going to have to work through that one. The traffic analysis, I comment on that a little bit later, so I'm just going to sidestep that for a bit because I have more to talk about on that one. Pipe material, so basically, what is being asked is that the, the subdivision regulations ask for reinforced concrete piping to be used for drainage, and the applicant is requesting high-density polyethylene. They made a statement in there is, in that the high-density polyethylene is used as an industry standard in construction nowadays, and we would agree with that. When you look at the, the profile, the pipes, the drainage pipes are actually installed fairly high. I'm on page two, if anyone's looking to catch up at the top. The drainage pipes are actually stalled fairly high in the roadway, and it looks to be about two to two-and-a-half feet of cover. So we would support granting of that waiver, but one of the things that we would be concerned with is before the, the binder is in, and you have heavy machinery driving over the material, the pipes may have a chance to deform, so basically televising them after the binder or before the binder is put in will just let you know if the, the pipes still have their integrity. So that, that would be one qualifier for granting that waiver. And the last one is lighting. That one's pretty self-explanatory. There's really no lighting on Pequot Road. That is a decision that the board has to make entirely on its own. Paul had commented on the sidewalk waivers. When I looked at how it's written in the subdivision regulations, I did not see that as a waiver request. What I saw was that it's a requirement to have sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, and then the applicant, at its choosing, can elect to install them as one, on one side, but then pay into a fund. So that's why I didn't comment on the waiver request, because I didn't view that as a waiver. It, to me, it was either an either-or situation. So going on with that.
Just a point of clarification, though, under six-point-eight-one, sidewalks of not less than five feet in width shall be constructed on both sides of the street, starting at the property line. When in the opinion of the board, such sidewalks are necessary, the planning board may waive the requirement and permit sidewalks on only one side, wherein in lieu of payment, an amount approved by the board is made into a sidewalk improvement account.
Right. So the wording is, is that you waive it, not the applicant.
They can request it.
They can request it, right. So that's kind of a run-through on, on page two of all the waivers, going into the zoning section six, which is basically the, the lot bulk requirements. We ran through them very quickly, so on the, the top of that section, we listed what the requirements are for lot sizes, frontage depths, widths, and then we listed the areas at the bottom of the page, and all of the lots that are being proposed comply with all of those requirements. And then if you go to page three, it actually, the last item on that is to talk about the setbacks. If you look at the plans, the lots actually have the, the lines drawn in for the setbacks, so everything is fine with that. So that's kind of like the, the review of the first initial zoning thing, and then I jumped into the subdivision regulations. I jumped back into zoning later on. It just kind of made sense to do it in that logical order. Again, the significant features, that's the, the map that we talked about, and waiver's been requested of that. I'm going to skip through these very quickly, only because it would just take a long time to go through them all, so I'm only going to talk about the ones that might have a comment on them, and I'll identify those as we go. So under four-point-three-point-three contacts, the, the first one is four-three-three-seventeen, and it's called the SWD parcel, which is, I believe, is the stormwater detention parcel. And the only comment about that is that if you look at how your subdivision regulations are, are, are put together, you have to have an easement over that property, and there has to be a homeowners agreement. It's also talked about in the later section, and because this was my first review of a subdivision for you, I did not know whether you required the homeowners agreement to be brought in in advance as part of the project to be gone over, or that's going to be conditions of approval. So all I wanted to do was just mention it, that there is additional work to be done on the homeowners agreement to basically comply with all the requirements that are in later So the next one, four-three-three-eighteen, this wording actually is not really correct on how I want it to say. The, the center line and baseline of the roadway is shown on the plans, and it came out that it's not shown. But typically, what we have seen is that there's a northern and eastern coordinate given on a couple of points on the baseline, so it can be duplicated in the field, and we just said that maybe as, if there's some updates that have to get done, those coordinates can be added. When replodding, four-four-three-three-nineteen, when replodding, you asked that the center line of the roadway be done in a red line, so we can do that. Four-point-three-point-three-twenty-six, the tree warden has to approve the, the species, so hearing that the, the town departments have yet to comment on the application, we may want to reach out and make sure the species that they're proposing are, are acceptable. Four-three-three-twenty-seven, traffic analysis. So a waiver has been requested of that. So under the traffic analysis in general, there's, there's two items that are included in the traffic analysis. One of them is a safety analysis, to make sure that the roadway itself and the conditions which are being proposed are safe. The other piece of that is a, it falls under a heading of a capacity analysis, which Rob had talked about. A new development generates new traffic on the roadway. That new traffic may cause something, a problem somewhere that has to get mitigated. And he's correct, and something as small as a nine-lot subdivision doesn't generate a lot of traffic, so we would not expect that there has to be anything to mitigate on the existing roadways. However, on the safety side of things, when, when we look at this in an aerial view, I think that a portion of that is required. If you're sitting in the roadway in this orientation and you're looking to your, your right, Pequot Road actually has a curve to the right, and when you go to Google Earth and you kind of sit about where the roadway is, the, the roadway disappears, and the vegetation that is in the roadway kind of hangs over. So there may be an issue with site distance. It does not look like it's an issue that can't be fixed. If there's any trimming that has to happen, it would be for trees that would be located in the right-of-way. Private property would not have to be affected, but I think an analysis just needs to get done just to document what the site distance is, and that's also a requirement later on in your subdivision regulations. So, so whilst, say that a, a waiver of the entire traffic study does not seem to be warranted, I think a portion of it needs to happen, which is basically just to document the safety of it. Four-three-three-twenty-eight, construction quantities estimate. There was one provided, but it wasn't filled out, so that has to get some, some values. Four-three-three-twenty-nine, a roadway maintenance plan. That needs to be provided. Going to page four, four-three-three-thirty, roadway acceptance. I did not comment a lot on this because if you look at how it's worded, this section basically references Section four-three-fourteen of the subdivision bylaws, and that is a list of all the requirements that are needed prior to the roadway being accepted at town meeting. It includes as-built certification, waivers of lien, everything, you know, inspections of utilities. So I just noted it here that I would expect that this would be a condition of approval, and that you would, because some of these items, you can't require now because they're, they're provided after the roadway is done, after the road is constructed. So I would assume that you are going to be conditioning the approval that prior to acceptance, all of these items would have to be provided. All right, Section five, design standards. In general, the roadway complies with all of the design standards that are listed in the subdivision regulations with respect to sizes, turning radiuses, widths. A couple of things I couldn't find dimensions for, so scaling the plans, it looks to be, to comply. One thing is the curb-to-curb radius looks to scale about sixty feet. It's required sixty feet. I couldn't find it. It looks to be okay, but I just need to confirm that. Again, under five-point-one-point-two, the two site-stopping distances, those are actually a requirement of the regulations, so I think we have to provide those. Five-point-one-point-three-point-one, what this section does is say that if the planning board deems that the roadway serving the subdivision is, in your opinion, unsatisfactory to serve the subdivision, you can require that reserved strips of land be taken from this parcel for future widening. I, we drove, I drove this corridor prior to issuing the memo. The roadway is in excellent shape compared to some of the other roadways in town. The roadway has adequate right-of-way on either side of the paved surface, so if an improvement had to happen and you had to widen it, I believe you could do that without having to affect this property or any of the other properties on either side of it. So it doesn't seem that having a requirement to reserve land across the front of this property for a future widening of Pequot makes any sense, but that's a decision you guys have to make. We don't, I don't think it's warranted, but... Five-point-four, open space. It's a requirement of the board to determine whether you need to require open space from this development for public recreation or playgrounds or things of that, that nature. So just note that there. Going to page five, stormwater control, we talk about that later. Sewage, there's no public sewage here, so it's all going to be septic. Water, it is connecting to the town's water system, so we would assume that the water department would have some comments. I think, let me see, I've got one more section, I think, and then we get into stormwater, so I'll just blow through those two sections.
Before you go further, just on the water, seeing as water hasn't commented yet, but I mean, is there any loops or connections to be made from that cul-de-sac, or no?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for reminding me on that. So as part of the, the preliminary review, when we did the preliminary review of this, we actually had two subdivisions. The one right to the south, the property to the south was also proposing a subdivision, so we reviewed both of those at the same time. And the comment that we made at that point, it says, it seems that, you know, this site's going to have a dead-end water line, and then the other site is developed, is going to have a dead-end water line. So it just made sense to make some provisions to create some sort of a loop between these two. So what this property has done is, is that Lot Three, Rob?
Lot Three, between Lot Three and Four there.
Between Lot Three and Four, they have reserved a twenty-foot easement for waterline easement to, to be installed, so if that other subdivision ever comes in, we need to make sure that an easement on that property lines up with this one, and then that creates a loop for the benefit of all the homes in that subdivision. loop for the benefit of all the homes in that subdivision. So they actually, that was a comment on our preliminary review, and that was addressed here.
Thank you.
Yep. So then under section six, required improvements for an approved subdivision. These are just some items that you are looking for on the plans in order to get constructed. The first one is really 6.6.2, and it talks about the bituminous berm across the driveways. You have a requirement that the berm not be cut at the driveway. So as cars pull into the driveway, the stormwater stays in the roadway. If you cut the berm, there's a chance for it to go on to private property. So we just noted that a note should be added on the plan, so that any developers don't cut the berm and leave it in place. 6.7.7, this is talking about the drainage pipe, reinforced concrete pipe versus the high-density polyethylene. There's a waiver requested to use that. That is an industry standard, and we've already talked about what we'd recommend. 6.8.1, the sidewalks, we already had a dialogue on that. So since the sidewalk is shown really only on one side of the subdivision, we'd assume that there's going to be some value contributed to the sidewalk fund. We do need an estimate in order to determine what that value is. So that will be something that has to be provided. 611, which is street lighting, and we've already talked about that. That's really the last waiver. Just a note under the last item, there's 61311. So you require two trees per lot. So you require 18 trees, and 20 are being provided. So a little bit extra on the tree side for that. The, small victories. The last zoning section, the water supply district. So this whole property lies in the water supply protection district, and usually there are some pretty stringent requirements for developing within that. There are a few that apply to the site, and basically recommending that some notes be added to the plan. So first off, if you look at that zoning bylaw, residential subdivisions are not prohibited in a water supply protection district. So this is not something that is up for debate. They're allowed. There's a whole list of restrictions, but this is not one of them. One, section 154, there is a pretty lengthy discussion in the zoning bylaw about commercial pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. And it basically says that they should be used with caution, and should not result in groundwater concentrations exceeding Massachusetts drinking water standards. I'm not sure how you enforce that, or how you regulate that, but at the very least, a note should be added to the plan. So if a developer is looking to purchase a lot, or a homeowner is looking a lot, that's kind of on their radar screen that there is, they can't just fertilize with abandon here. They have to exercise some caution. And the last one, section 171C, for, in the water supply protection district, residential lots are limited to 20% impervious coverage. So on a 40,000-square-foot lot, that's 8,000 square foot of surface that will shed water. So that's, if it's a 3,000-square-foot house, that leaves 5,000 square foot for a driveway. So it's a pretty generous amount. It's not anything that's meant to be limiting, but again, it leaves a substantial portion of a lot available to accept water and allow it to recharge, so.
Before we leave the water part here, Cindy informed me tonight, and I had no prior notification from PVPC, but Baypac has disbanded.
Did not know that.
And they had received-
It was established, it started for, I think it was 20 or 25 years. It reached that point, and then that was it.
So, you know, they got the notifications along with the Butters' notice with the cities and towns that have butched Southampton, but there was no comment. But I didn't know that they had disbanded.
Interesting. That was not well-publicized.
Yeah, they came, Patty's trying to set up another entity, whatever it is, yeah.
Yep. So that kind of completes the review as far as zoning and subdivision regulations. What's left is really under the stormwater management piece, so if you want to-
Okay. So at this time, before we go into the stormwater, I'm going to ask the board, any questions from board members to either John or Rob, before I open it up to the Butters and the public?
Cindy Palmer, member of the board. I have a question about the water supply protection to you, John, and that is, what is your, you know, professional opinion about how that can be evaluated, whether or not there's overuse of chemicals to keep green lawns and that sort of thing? Maybe it's not happening in Southampton, but what would be your recommendation? I think this is not the only subdivision that is a concern. What would be a way to measure that?
The test pits that were performed here show the groundwater table is actually down fairly far. I believe it's somewhere around seven to eight feet, if I'm recalling from memory. So the column of soil that is above the groundwater table actually acts as a really good filter for impurities before it gets to that. I would have to think that you're dumping a tremendous amount of chemicals on your lawn in order to go through a seven or foot column of soil to affect the groundwater. As far as measuring it goes, really, the only way to measure it is to actually take water samples. Because the fact that they're referencing the Massachusetts drinking water standards, that's all items that would be taken. So if, for whatever reason, someone had a well here, and you were taking well for irrigation, you could grab a sample out of that randomly and have it tested. But it's very tough to go on private property and get that.
Okay. And I know that the number of proposed houses falls out of the inclusionary housing guidelines that we hoped, we hoped very strongly in Southampton that we would be able to have. And I'm hearing from residents that Cheapers, Corral, how come we never get to that? And I'm going to just ask again. I think I asked when you came in preliminarily, why can't we see something like that happen in town? It's something that people are asking for, and is it because there isn't enough space, or is, you know, and I do feel the need to ask this again in this public forum.
It doesn't-
Why don't you get up there?
So, given the space that we have on this parcel, and we need the square footage for the size of the houses and the bedrooms for the nitrogen loading, we cannot put any more lots than what is there and have it work. So if we had a larger parcel, then it would open up the door to do something a little bit different. But unfortunately, to put four-bedroom, correct, Rob? Four-bedroom homes, we need the larger parcels of land.
Okay. Is this lot, I did drive by Pequot Road the other day, just to kind of get a feel for where this is. This is currently a treed lot, right? It's, am I, did I see the right place? I did see an existing house there, but-
Probably that parcel is 35% treed. There's a large, the whole back half.
There's plenty of trees like this section, but this is all open because it's was farmed in.
Right. There's all fields back there.
How about on the street end, is there trees a lot on the street side?
It's all open.
There's just a small section there, and then it's all open.
Well, that came a close enough.
Okay.
This is kind of your screen here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh.
That's the tree line.
Oh, okay.
So that kind of shows you what's open and what's-
I was just interested in that. Okay.
And the intent, just to follow up with that, the intent is not to go in and clear cut the 30% or 40% that is treed. We're going to, my intent is to leave, obviously, a buffer behind both sides of the street, because if the other gentleman ever comes back in with his project, I want to create a buffer there. And I also like to create a buffer in between the lots. So where the houses are set, you're not necessarily, it's just barren and open right to your neighbor.
Okay. And then my other comment is to you folks here. Has there been a precedent set for how to establish the fund in lieu that we're talking about for the sidewalk? You know, I know this is a new set of bylaws, but do we have any sort of precedent that we're, you know, consistently doing the same thing for all of other subdivisions?
No, because this is the second subdivision that's come before us since the new bylaw.
Okay.
So the first one did sidewalks in the entire subdivision, and this one is-
Is that the Quigley Estates? Is that the first one?
Exactly. Pellegrini.
But am I not correct that they said that they made that choice? Were they told a number that they would have had to pay into, or there was never a discussion of amount?
I don't recall that there was any amount discussed, because they decided to do it.
Okay. That's all.
It wasn't a waiver that I found, and I went back on it, and I don't, I could not find whether it was a waiver asked for only on one side, so.
It's at the discretion of the board, if it's allowed. So being in town for all these years, I just look at, it could be money well-spent, if it makes sense, to put it into a fund to do sidewalks somewhere else, instead of, to me, it's redundant to have sidewalks on both sides of a street of an eight-lot subdivision.
Okay. So my question was just, you know, are we being fair? That's all. We never told the other developer the amount that we would expect. Okay.
To my knowledge, Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't recall saying the amount.
Okay. Great. I'll have more questions later. Thanks.
Jim, any questions on your behalf?
Not right now.
Keith?
No, I have none, not this time.
At this time, I will ask the public, Butters, neighbors, or any interested party who would like to ask a question or make a comment, to come before the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Will Spath, 42 Pequot Road. Mr. and Mrs. Labucki, Mr. Gilaheer, distinguished members of the board, thank you for affording me the opportunity to come here and speak at this meeting. This is not a foolhardy attempt to stop a subdivision. I merely have some concerns. My property is located south of the proposed subdivision, and four years ago, I was granted a variance to keep livestock, which I do. And I just wanted on the public record that there will be livestock on my property. There may at times be undue noise, a little unsightliness, and perhaps some bad smells and bugs. So it's all the stuff that goes with farming. I just want to put that out there. Secondly, I have an environmental concern, and this is just to protect my investment. That's my property. I'm worried that there may be a situation where there's an isolated land subject to flooding. I don't know if that term resonates with anybody here. But in the springtime, all the runoff from White Loaf Mountain, the snow melt, it comes down, and it lands in that valley that comes between Pequot Road and White Loaf Hill. And there is times of the year when there are standing water conditions out there. And it is my concern that as this sub-development, and possibly another one to the south of it, are installed, they're just going to bulldoze fill-in, and all that runoff is going to wind up on my land, and it will create a wetland there.
Well, to give you the quick answer, that stormwater prevention, which is going to be addressed coming up here shortly, they have to maintain all the stormwater runoff, et cetera, on the site, both on this one or any subdivision that may be coming down the road. There were no, I'm going to ask the applicant, was there any issues or questions from Conscom on this at all?
So, so there is not. There is no isolated lands subject to flooding, based on the definition, the DEP definition of isolated lands subject to flooding. There are no other wetland resource areas on the property. There may be a frozen ground condition that the gentleman's speaking of, but I would be very, and as a farmer next door, I'm sure you can speak to it as well. The soils are, you know, very permeable. We wouldn't expect any issue other than maybe a frozen ground condition or a perched condition on ice. That said, we match, we are required to match pre- and post-development runoff flows. So the drainage patterns prior to the development and post-development, we can't increase the runoff to the south. But that's certainly been looked at, and I think Mr. Furman can say that as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Furman will be addressing that peer review on the stormwater shortly.
And also, I would like to respectfully urge the board to grant them, they're not putting lights in. I'm not sure how to word that, but-
That's not going to happen, I don't believe, because-
Thank you. I really appreciate that. No light pollution.
Can I ask you a question? Sorry. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What kind of livestock, and how much?
I run cows, beef cows.
And approximately?
I have six right now.
Six or eight?
No, six.
Oh. I was thinking you'd know the difference between six or eight, but you have six.
No, I currently have six.
Six. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I like cows.
Mr. Gilaheer will put up a sign by, beware then, right? Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, just a question. Chris Fowles, 11 Gun Road. I'm somebody who grew up in Southampton and have returned home to retire, and am very much looking forward to living out again in the rural areas of Southampton. I do have a concern, I guess, as I understand more and more open land is getting developed in town, which it needs to do. We need to grow, and there's ways to manage our resources. I guess I'm concerned about what I thought I understood as some sort of a regulation or bylaw about the 10-unit development, and why we are allowing nine units instead of affordable housing that could be that 10th unit. Because I think as we have an aging population in Southampton, you know, I would like to see the people that have been longtime residents would feel like if they have to downsize as their life situation changes, they've got an opportunity to stay in Southampton and not feel like they have to move out of town because there is no affordable housing. So just trying to take that into consideration of how we can provide incentives from the planning board, from the town, to encourage developers to not just do the nine units, but to do that 10th unit and make some affordable housing for our town people. So, thank you.
The Housing Partnership, by the way, is working on that. It's a very archaic and complicated inclusionary zoning bylaw we have, and it's not very user-friendly right now. So Jenica Reynolds and her Housing Partnership are still trying to work on language for that bylaw that might ease some of the restrictions to make it doable in the near future. But stay tuned. Anyone else would like to comment? Questions? If not, then at this time, I'll ask John or Rob, whomever wants to start first, on the stormwater management. And seeing as John was hired to do the consulting, VHB, on the entire project, we included the peer review for the stormwater management at the same time. So typically, sometimes when the plan comes before the board, we have to continue the hearing for a peer review. Knowing that he was going to handle the project in its entirety, he did his homework on that ahead of time. So go ahead, John.
Thank you, Paul. So on my report, I'm going to be starting on page six, the second bolded heading going down. So in general, describing the stormwater collection system here, we have a series of catch basins in the roadway. I believe there are six of them. And they are deep sump catch basins with hooded outlets. So any product, fuel product, oil product, that happens to come off of cars, just by the normal course of driving, would enter the catch basin, and the hood actually keeps it in the catch basin, which is ideal, being in the water supply protection district. Without the hoods, it goes into the basin and just travels down the pipe. So the hoods are very integral to the success of this. In addition, there is a water quality unit incorporated into the system. And what the water quality unit does is it actually almost performs an overdrive on the removal of sediment from the waste stream. So we sand in town, you get a rain event, or you plow, it enters the catch basin. The hoods keep most of it in the catch basin, but you get some that come down the pipe. Prior to the infiltration or the detention basin, this water quality unit will remove whatever's left. DEP has a requirement that prior to infiltrating waters into the soil, 44% of the suspended solids have to be removed from the waste stream. And the combination, or actually, the water quality unit alone removes more than that. But the combination of the water quality unit and the hooded catch basins removes in excess of that. So basically, all that is focused on improving the quality of the water prior to it getting into the infiltration. So what we have been seeing, and what this development does as well, is that in winter conditions, when an applicant goes out and does soil testing- conditions, when we, when an applicant goes out and does soil testing for a stormwater system, they basically do a perk test and they figure out through the engineering wizardry of mathematics, they can figure out how fast water takes to go into soil. That's great for the summer, but when things are frozen in the winter, it's like trying to get water to flow through an ice cube. It just doesn't work. So a couple of ways around that, and one of the ways that we've done that here on this basin is that they've put basically each in catch basins in the bottom of the detention basin. You can kind of see them in the basin there. And they've connected them with infill, with perforated pipe. So as water enters the basin, it has access to the soils that are below the frost line and basically infiltrates water into that. So the system will keep working through the year. So in general, that's kind of a quick summary of how the system was designed. Your bylaw has specific requirements for what is needed for complete submittal and it also requires compliance with the DEP stormwater management bylaw. And the application that submitted basically addresses the majority of the comments. There's very few comments relating to stormwater. So starting on page six, applicability. So the first couple of sections of your bylaw, you basically include some requirements to see whether the project is required to have a stormwater permit or not. So under this one here, it is required to do a stormwater permit under your item D, subdivision or construction activities disturbing greater than 40,000 square foot of area. So what I will note on this is that the majority of lots are tend to be around 40,000 square feet. So as individual homeowners come in, they probably are not going to completely tear up the lot, so they would not be required to have their own individual permit. But the two lots in the back and then the remaining land in front, those are land areas in excess of 100,000 square feet. So someone developing those lots could exceed the 40,000 square feet. So one of our recommendations was to add a note on these specific lots that if 40,000 square feet or more area is disturbed and exposed, an individual stormwater permit by the homeowner is needed to come in through here. And you have a procedure for doing that as part of the board. So exceptions, you have six exceptions also, which you give applicants a second way out to see whether you need to have this or not. And this project does not meet any of the exceptions. So based on those first two items, you do have to come in here and provide a stormwater permit, which is what we're reviewing right now. Section seven, G2, what applications required. All of the requirements are met, basically except one, which is item C, ongoing stormwater maintenance agreement. So the application provided a very thorough document called the long-term maintenance procedures. And typically, what has to happen is that needs to get turned into an agreement and it's something that's executed. I thought the board had their own form of that agreement and then that long-term plan would be appended to it and then you would both execute it. So that needs to kind of get worked out on, whatever the form is for that. The review procedures for the approval of stormwater permits, I think Paul confirmed that it's been sent out to the department heads and none have responded yet, so that needs to kind of get shut down. The last item, inspections. Once the project is fully approved and all the conditions are met and it starts construction, you require inspections at these dates during construction. So typically, what we've seen is that because certain things happen, you don't know when the project's going to start after approval, when the final approval's come in, you usually make a condition that says that prior to construction, there's a construction meeting where everybody gets together to kind of plan how things are moving out and then these dates are provided so that they basically get written into the permit that way. Going to page seven, the severity bond. So you require a separate bond for the cost of the stormwater management system. And usually, there's an estimate that is provided so that that bond can be provided in any form acceptable under mass general law. So that needs to be posted and the amount has to be calculated. Under section six, G1, Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Plan, everything that has been submitted or listed here is basically directly out of your bylaw and all of them have been addressed. There's just a couple worth commenting on. Item E, Existing and Proposed Easements. I seem to recall that the Eversource, at the time when I was on the board, Wemco, required their own easement across the fronts of property because it didn't want their electrical infrastructure in the right-of-way where we planted trees on them and then they'd have to get dug up. So I just mentioned it. I think as the conversations with Eversource start to occur, what I fully expect is that those first three lots, actually probably all, both sides of the roadway, would have easements granted to Eversource for their infrastructure. You have requirement that all easements be shown on the definitive subdivision plan prior to recording. So it's kind of a chicken and egg type of thing, but I think it's worth mentioning because I'd hate to have you record the easement or record the plan, find out that you have additional easements that would not be shown on the plan. So all these other items are here. You get into N and then it's the last, basically the three, description of the construction wastes and hazardous spill procedures. Basically, it's asking the applicant to put together a plan if they happen to spill diesel fuel or something ruptures out there, how you take care of it. And the general sequencing of construction, what we're going to do, you know, clearing, grubbing, some cutting, and then going through that. So those are two items that need to get taken care of. The last item on that page, which is the Stormwater Management Performance Standards, there are 10 standards that are listed in your bylaw and they mimic the ones that are in the DEP. The applicant has provided responses for all of the standards. We've reviewed them, we've gone through them, and we agree with all the responses that they meet all the standards as applicable, both by your bylaw and by the DEP. Let's see, Stormwater Management Measures. There's really nothing. This is all just kind of confirmation of things that are in the bylaw. One thing to note, under section six, H3, Specific Design Criteria, that section deals with infiltration systems when they contain underground piping, specific underground piping, and we really don't have any of that on the site. So it really doesn't apply to this section. Again, six J, the Operation Maintenance and Inspection Agreement, that needs to get executed in a form. We need a, usually the long-term maintenance procedures are appended to that agreement. The Performance Bond, we already talked about that. Basically, you just need a dollar value in a form. And then additional comments on the last page. We've talked about the first one already, which is the electric company requiring, usually requiring an easement across the front of the lots. Need to kind of figure that out. And the last one is what I talked about before, adding a note to those three lots that a homeowner, if they disturb 40,000 square feet of area, they would need to come in for their own stormwater management permit for the house construction. And those are all the comments that we made, all summarized for ease of review. And that kind of completes our review.
Rob, for the information of the gentleman with the farm animals, could you just show him, you know, Kathy, could you just bring that down just a little bit more? Could you just show him where the flow is going, you know, the topography of the site?
Yeah, a little upside down, but so north is down.
Correct. South is north.
Yep. So this is the flow.
Just bring it down some more, Kathy. Toward, yeah, so he can just maybe point to it lower. There you go. Oh, my goodness.
This is the flow path here. So to your point, to actually to John's great explanation of the stormwater management system, my guess is what you're experiencing, you probably see that for really early season, maybe.
Yeah, there's standing water.
The rate, we've seen that over, you know, the last 20 years, we've seen it where you have a rain on ice event, that type of thing. What John had mentioned is we have a stormwater basin right here. And this stormwater basin is designed to handle the water from our project. The, right in here and here are two dry wells basically connected by perforated pipe with rims on the top.
And that's going to stay at 260?
The element.
As per your plans?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the idea is that this will intercept anything in that low point. And then what happens is that size so that the water will be called metered out, like a hourglass, it'll be allowed to be released at the same rate that it was redeveloped. And then the rest, you know, a lot of that will infiltrate into the ground. Certainly during normal ground conditions, you can expect that that, as you probably have in your property, it will go right down. But this should alleviate any of the questions or concerns that are happening like maybe a February rain event.
Yeah, it sounds to me like you're going to make it better than the current situation.
I'd like to believe that. Certainly won't make it worse.
And if not, you'll have to answer to his cattle.
So I'd like to, or would you like me to just kind of respond? Yeah, so I'd like to thank John for the thorough report. Obviously, he's gone through the regulations in detail. We arguably agree with all of the review. Be happy to look at the items that John raised. We're either happy to, if need be, continue the hearing tonight and address those and come back, or if you, if those can be addressed as a condition of approval. The one item I think that maybe would be the item that would not be something that would, or something that might make the last, is this little area here where John was talking about site distance, et cetera. So I guess my one question is, because, and I have to, I apologize because I have to look at that area myself. I don't know if you did get a chance to take a look at that in person. Is the curvated pattern that we show on the plan for the tree line, is that what raised the concern? Or did you actually, did you see, is there obstruction that you see there, you know, when you're on site?
I think when you calculate the site distance, it's based on the average speed of the roadway. So that's the first thing. I didn't know what the average speed was. But when I drove out through there and I kind of parked where the driveway is and I'm looking south, the roadway curves. And as it curves, the trees that are in the right-of-way hang over. It's actually off the page. It's down by where your notes are.
Oh, yeah.
It's down there.
Oh.
So there may be some trimming down over there. And again, when I go to Google Earth, I measured it and you were somewhere around 180, 200 feet.
Yep.
Again, but I don't know the speed of that roadway. So that needs to just get calculated. And if there's any mitigation for that, then.
So my, so my assumption would be that the mitigation would be tree trimming. That's, I believe it's within the right-of-way. So I think we would agree, if the board sees fit, we would agree to any tree trimming required, which I would assume would be the mitigation. Telephone poles and that type of thing, obviously, we're not going to be able to. I think they're on that side too, aren't they?
Yeah. I don't think that's.
Yeah. We'd be, we'd be happy, you know, I'm assuming we'd have to get approval from DPW.
Probably that's true.
Yeah. But yeah, so we're happy to address all those items the way you see fit.
What's your opinion on, now you're talking about traffic analysis, right?
So there was, I guess.
For safety analysis.
Multiple pieces to the traffic analysis. I think the safety analysis was the portion that Mr. Furman had recommended. I think we can, you know, confirm the design speed for the road and confirm the site distance to the south and to the north pretty effectively. And if there's any mitigation in the way of tree trimming or removal, I guess Mr. Gilaheer would certainly be responsible for that with permission from DPW. That would be my guess. I don't know.
What's your take on this? Have you been over there at the site?
Yeah, I was there today. I mean, it's, from my eye, the site distance looks pretty sufficient. I mean, that's, I don't know if you.
That's the photo from today, John, looking south. If you want to take a look at it. So I don't, I don't, standing there, I didn't necessarily see an issue.
Other than the white truck in the way, which is mine, but I mean, looking south and north is wide open. South to me is, it does, as looking south, it curves to the right, but that's several hundred feet away.
I think the, I think the other thing, it's borderline, because when I measured it, I went out to Google Earth. Went out and drove it, I didn't walk it. Then I went to Google Earth and I said, you're somewhere around 180, 200 feet. And then as I was doing the review, I noticed that you actually required that to be calculated as part of your subdivision regulations. So when I, when I kind of questioned whether the view to the south was enough and then I saw that you required to have it, I said, well, just, you know, you've got two things asking for it, so.
Jim, are you familiar with that over there?
Yeah, I'm familiar. I drove by. Again, I did, from what I saw, it didn't look like an issue.
Yep.
It's a pretty straightforward road. A little curve to it, if you're saying.
If it is an issue, it's easily solved with some trimming.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a deal.
I think the speed limit's either 30 or 35 in that area too. It's fairly low. So it's not like you're pulling out on something that's doing 45. So that makes a big difference.
Regarding all the comments, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, people on the board may want to weigh in on this, that with all the questions or the comments from VHB, that we continue this so they can come back with answers rather than having them address that tonight, give them some time to study some of these things?
Yeah, I think that makes more sense. Instead of having all these conditions, let's address the bulk of them in the filing.
Sure.
Two weeks enough time, you think, to?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we're all listening to the same review. It seems fairly straightforward. They all seem reasonable comments. We, you know, I would think within two weeks, we can handle the site distance question and, you know, the other requirements, for sure.
In that two-week period, we can also get responses that we need from town departments?
Yes, I'll follow up again with highway and water.
And Conservation Commission. Do you have something in writing?
Conservation, I saw Marla tonight too. She had no issues.
I see, okay.
On it. What was that, Jim?
What fire department?
I sent fire, police, there was no response. My main concern really is highway because they wait in on it before it. And usually, water is always about the loop, if it's possible. I don't know whatever other questions they'd have. But I'll follow up and if I get a response between now and the next hearing, I'll forward it to you so you can address it at that time.
And we have provided provisions with the easement between the two lots here. And certainly, that is something we're working for the applicant on the subdivision next door. So we'll certainly include that on there. And then if water department wants it connected, that can, that can happen pretty easily.
I think one of the major things here you've got to do is come up with a cost estimate on that sidewalk so we have something to go by so we can decide which way we're going to go with it.
One of the items that typically comes up with something like that is whether or not this is subject to prevailing wage rates. And because obviously, as a private contractor, Mr. Gilaheer could get that done pretty reasonably. I'm assuming it's acceptable to, for him to put, get a quote from one of his concrete contractors and provide that where the money that's being put in the fund is comparable to the amount of money that the developer would have to spend.
Otherwise would have spent.
Right.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Seems fair. Thank you.
I believe it's Batumatis kind of rebuilt.
Okay, right.
It does say that, Batumatis.
Any other questions from the board or comments?
Well, comment I like about this one, this subdivision, is the stormwater detention basin is on its own parcel. Unlike Woodmar, it's on somebody's property with an easement. And there's issues with that now. I know they're complaining about it. So having it in its own parcel with easement is a good thing, I guess.
Can I ask another question regarding the stormwater? Is this like a mosquito breeding area? I mean, is that not necessarily a problem?
Certainly, any puddling or ponding area could turn into that if it wasn't maintained properly. To John's point, there's a long-term operation and maintenance plan that's required. I've seen, even in sandy areas, I'm sure John has seen this, where, you know, if you're not maintaining things and it gets, you know, there's sediment, the basin could get blinded and it could become that.
Yeah.
But the, it is required to be maintained based on current conditions and based on the soils out there. We would not expect that because it's such good material underlying it.
Good, thanks.
Is there a fence around this one in the plant? I don't remember.
I don't think we do have one.
No, no.
Just because that's coming up in another, Woodmar as well.
Yeah, but there wasn't, there was none required for Pellegrini. Yeah, but there wasn't, there was none required for Pellegrini Estates either.
Would the value of a fence be safety for, you know, children running around in that sort of, or even animals?
Typically, there are four-foot chain link or, you know, metal rung fence and that doesn't keep many kids out. You know, I guess the real fear would be if there was a, you know, you hear these freak stories about a, a two-year-old getting out and, you know, that type of thing. But these are three-to-one slopes, on the side slopes. So you envision a three-to-one slope, it is mullable with us, you know.
Three-to-one is how many degrees?
So, no, so it's three, so it's, it's one foot up and three feet down.
I get you, okay. Like a ramp, yeah, okay.
So it's not, it's not drastic. It's a reasonable slope. Certainly, a child, if they could crawl in, could crawl out just as easily.
What about a wild animal or something?
They could get in.
And out, and out.
I'm joking, I'm sorry. Yeah, they, they'll be able to get in and out. Yeah, they're, they're very reasonable. There's no pit, so to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Who's not going to be in with the farm next door?
No, no moose are going to trip in there? Okay.
The cattle might be drinking. So we'd be happy to, you know, request the continuance or accept the continuance and come back in two weeks with the answers for you. We'll go through John's review in detail and we'll make sure that all of our plans are updated accordingly. And then the other information requested, we'll provide that as well.
Very good. Do I have a motion to continue this to, I believe the date is May 1st, correct?
So moved. Continue to May 1st.
Motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion?
None.
I have none.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Lebec. Thank you, Mr. Furman.
Thank you.
Thank you for all those in attendance.